And call Jesse to the sacrifice and I will show thee what thou shalt do and thou shalt anoint unto me him whom I name unto thee.
Esa ay balivirundukka alai payaagai, appadu nee sayyavendiyadee naan onukka arivippeen, naan onukku sollugaravanai enakaga abishayakam bandavaayaagai ennaar?
Kathodiya parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Indike abishayakathu kuri thudana oru teeli vana ari vai sabai purindukollavendhi the avasiya.
Today is very important for us to understand the church about their anointing.
Avasiyam illamae yari elumbadiyaa.
And with our urgency don't depart the place.
Onga de nairathu niggal bind paduthengal.
Make use of the time.
Abishayakam enbadu pudiyar parti sabai nuudiyapoorunathu kaaha anupappattu oru devi gusakthi.
Anointing is the divine power which is sent to the perfection of the New Testament church.
Abishayakam entra vaartai palayarpatti lumirukkaraadu, pudiyar parti lumirukkaraadu.
The word anointing is found both in New Testament and Old Testament.
Abishayakam entra vaartai hindukkulu mattamadathinadu omuyavapaduthukkaraadu.
The word anointing is used by the Hindu religion and other religion.
Anal avargal mattu vikrungalukka abishayakam manukkararal. Anal inge jeevanoodukkaraan naam abishayakam manappadukarap.
But here they are anointing to the idols but we are anointing to the living one.
Avargal vikrungalukka paala abishayaka, neyya abishayaka, andha abishayakallam paduva, adu kalukku manukku mandra. Ananamakkabadiyala, devan nammai unnadathin belathinal, aviinal abishayakam manukkarad.
They anoint with all milk and oil and anything with idols for sand and stone and but the Lord is anointing as with great anointing.
Palayarpatti abishayakathukku pudiyar parti abishayakathukku vitthiasam unda.
There is a great difference between the Old Testament anointing and New Testament anointing.
Palayarpatti lakathodhi avi aanavindra alaike padukarad, pudiyar parti parisutha avi aanavindra alaike padukarad.
In the Old Testament it is called as the spirit of the Lord but in New Testament it is called as the whole spirit.
Palayarpatti la enneen mulamaga, thailath abishayakathaila menkara, thailathin mulamaga abishayakam manappattark.
And through oil, through anointing oil and they were anointed in the Old Testament.
Enneyo abishayakamo illada pachathil.
And in case if there is no oil and there is anointing oil.
Saalvayathu kippodu abishayakam manappattadee naam vedathale parkamudiyi.
They cast the mantle upon them, they are anointed.
Andha abishayakathala anyabasiyak kadayadu.
And there is no unknown tongues in that anointing.
Andha abishayakathala oru vallamay arango.
And the anointing, the power will descend.
Andha vallamay nirantharamaayirukkaadu.
And it will not be so permanent.
Teevai podum boludu andha vallamay arango.
If it is needed, the anoint power will come.
Adu avargalai presitipattu oru lai maathinadee tavar, parisuthamulla oru lai maathavillai.
And that making people so familiar and did not make them to so anointing.
Ovaru staanathur kaaha avargal abishayakam manappattark.
According to the position, they were anointed.
Senkalarthukondrunthu oru manidhanai abishayakam manina boludu, avan asarianai maathappattan.
When the pharaoh was anointed and he will become a priest.
Senkalarthukondrunthu avanai, ipoludu asarianai devan maathukkarad.
And one who went to the sea and become the high priest.
Adumai thukondrunthu avanai, raja vaka oru maathukkarad.
And one have become flocking the sheep and become a king.
Yehr putti vivasayam seethukondrunthu avanai tirkadarisiaka abishayakam manukkarad.
And one was farming the land, had become a prophet.
Kathodi sannidhanathal irundhu tuudanai kaapathukaravana kaabishayakam manukkarad.
One who was found with the presence of the Lord was found upon his protectors.
Devan thanudiyakumarnaakiya kristuvai suviyeshaganaka abishayakam manukkarad.
And father made his son as an evangelist.
Ipidi ovaru staanathur kum abishayakam andha naatkalil teevai padad.
In those days, the anointing was needed according to the position.
Anadi nal tirkadarisiyali appalu du oru abishayakathaila menkara oru komby vaitirupar.
So the prophets will have the anointing oil as a home.
Pudiyar parti palayarpatti la naa parkumbadu, asarianulukku illavutal ipidi padu oru uleyam kodukappattundadu.
In Old Testament, we can see such a ministry was given to the high priest.
Abishayakathaila menkuru onrayni nerapi eduthu ayyathappadutha vaidu.
And you have to prepare an anointing oil.
Adukin enna porulkal sharekkappadavenu.
And these are the things that be added.
Avasiyam illamal adu chigiravan skulaisayappadakadav.
And without any needer, if it is doing, he should become a murderer.
Adu enna ratio le sharekkavenu.
And according to particular ratio, it should be joined.
Adu asariani appalu du vaitirupar.
And priest have to keep this always.
Elavutal devanudiyay manidharukkunday kaygalile irukku.
And it should be found in the man of God.
Ingene naa parthaboludu samuelu day kayla indha abishayakathailam andha pupeela nerappappattundadu.
When we look here, we are able to see in Samuel's hand, the anointing oil was found.
Adutthu naa parkumbadu elisa vinkayi kayle, andha abishayakam irundadu.
That anointing was vested in the hands of Eliza.
Avan thanudiyavelekarni pathichonan thaila pupeen nerapi kundu poindu sollukkarad.
And he asked the servant to fill the anointing oil with vessel and go.
Apa ivagali irundhu naa vilangikuluvu the enna?
What do we understand from this?
Palayarpatti indha abishayakam irundadu.
The Old Testament, their anointing was there.
Avargal vallemi olulaai marinak.
Had made them powerful.
Simpson mel indha vallemay aranginaboludu singkatte klippan.
When the anointing rested upon Samson, he will tore at the line.
Anal avande tanipattu aalkayla jayam illadu.
But there is no overcoming life in this individual life.
Avanikindha abishayakavaramboludu oru barakramvanaai maruvaan, mattabadi avan engayadu pooyavitliyadu paduthuduvan.
When the anointing comes, he become an mighty person and he will lay on some other home. Why?
Palayarpatti la yedavudu ondril purnamirundhal pothu.
In Old Testament, if there is one perfection, there is enough.
Anal pudiyar parti la appadiyala.
But in New Testament, it is not like that.
Elavuttil oru manidhan purnathu pettukollav.
And he have to receive perfection in every aspect.
Kathodiya parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Naam vedathile parkumbadu.
When we see in the scripture.
Nam sariyana muntrukattu abishayakathu pettukollavenu.
We have to receive three kinds of anointing.
Indraya message, muntrukattu abishayakam.
Today's message is through three aspects of anointing.
Kattar ongelukuthu tuudukodu kavirumbukarad, adu muntrukattu abishayakam.
The three stages of anointing.
Nengella abishayakam bettamuka da.
We are all anointed.
Pudiyar partla nengae ellarume, nengal anyabasiyepesukurir.
In New Testament period, we all speak in unknown tongues.
Anai inneki naa indha prasangam muriyurukulaa.
Before the preaching gets over.
Indha abishayakathu nengi irukkingiradu, neng analyze pananu.
You have to analyze and which anointing you have.
Modala abishayakama?
First anointing.
Rendawadu abishayakama?
A second anointing.
Munaavudu abishayakama?
A third anointing.
Idhala endha abishayakathu irukkingiradu, nengale kandubidikala, andha vasanakalakkaakumbothe, ongelukku purindukundamay endha irathala ukandurukarontu kandubidchiruvie.
While you hear the word of God, you are able to identify in which state as you are found.
Adenanndike ongelukku mundaavakee oru avi lae yavappadukar.
I am urged in spirit to present before you.
Nengal vedathile parkumbadu.
When we see in the scripture.
Saulay kuri thunigal padithaal.
When we read about Saul.
Saul oru visay, oru kattu abishayakathu mattu dan padthan.
And Saul received only one kind of anointing.
Salamonin niggal padithu padthan.
When we look into Solomon.
Avanikirandran kattu abishayakathukkavanta, anmuntrang kattu abishayakathukvaravay.
He came to the second state of anointing and did not come to the third state.
Anal taavidin walkayi padthan.
When we look into the life of David.
Avan muntrang kattu abishayakathukvandu cheetan.
He reached the third state of anointing and overcome.
Avanikunnelayana veedu kattappattadu.
And the state of the house was built upon him.
Avanukkavadavadesam vaakuthatham manappattadu.
And the land was promised for him.
Avanikunnelayana sudandaram kadaitadu.
And there was a proper inheritance found to him.
Etthiyana edathal avanukku oru panku kadaitadu.
And he received the proper praising him.
Indike namdya subject, taavidinudiyam muntrukattu abishayakam.
And today's our subject is the three stages of anointing of David.
Palayarpatti ellame pudiyar parti nuudiyadishtan dengal.
And the Old Testament anointing and three New Testament examples.
Adu nam sariyana vedathal velingikollavenu.
We have to identify in a proper way.
Ingge taavidinudiyabishayakathu dhanam ipparudhu paditho.
We are meditate and read about this, the anointing of David.
Taavidinabishayathukku, sauludiyabishayathukka rembu different.
There is a vast difference between the anointing of David and anointing of Saul.
Nengalvana agapadchuparanga.
When we read this.
Onnusamuel 16:3. Naan onakkuchollugaravanai enakkaha abishayakam banna.
And you have to anoint them that I tell you.
Idu taavidinudiyabishayakam, kattar kaaha abishayakam manappattavan.
And this was the anointing of David who was anointed for God.
Anal onnusamuel patthamadikaram modalavasanaate parkumbadu.
But when we look into first Samuel, chapter 10 verse 1.
Angesauludiyabishayakam sollappattukkara.
And here it is mentioned about the anointing of Saul.
Adu enna abishayakam?
What was that?
Talayvanaka abishayakam.
And he was anointed as a captain.
Adu janathin talayvanana abishayakam, taavidinudiyabishayakam, devanukkunndru vaalamudiyana abishayakam.
And anointing of the Saul is anointing because a captain for the people but the anointing of David is to live for God.
Nee edakkaha abishayakam manappattai.
For what you are anointed.
Adha enekimukkiyamana.
And that is very important today.
Onnusamuel 1:16. Ange kattar samuelutle modalnali solivittad.
And the first day, the Lord mentioned him.
Isravelin adibidiyaka avanay abishayakam banna.
And you anoint him as a captain over by people of his ring.
Apa abishayathunadu enakathu niggal purindukol.
And we must identify the purpose of the anointing.
Saulin abishayakam, aalugisigara abishayakam, taavidinabishayakam, kattarkaha vaalakkudiya abishayakam.
Anointing of Saul is to rule over the people but anointing of David is to live for God.
Oru posting kaaha avanukka abishayakam kadaitadu.
The anointing was received to Saul for posting.
Anal adengkuda avanal kaapathamudiyavell.
But he could not able to preserve it.
Aday ilamdu taavidthan.
He lost it and he was terrible.
Abishayakamu velasindhu, pisasa unukulla velasindhu.
Anointing worked on him as Satan worked on him.
Oraytaytla avi naramva, araytaytla pisasa unukulla varu.
At the same time, he fell in spirit and same time, Satan will enter in him.
Iddinarakuma?
Will it happen?
Namdya aalkal oru silalana la anyabasa pesukkara.
And some of our people used to speak in unknown tongues well.
Kettavartim besukkara.
They speak bad words.
Nalla anyabasiyam besukkara.
They speak unknown tongues well.
Sandayum porukkara.
And they quarren.
Nalla abishayathul aramburaga.
They speak in unknown tongues well.
Avargal adutthavandu sottayamathuraga.
And they achieve the positions of others.
Nalla abishayathul aramburaga.
They feel in anointing.
Avargal opuravaka, manikke, sagikke, vinnumudiyavell.
But they could not end you, but they could not reconcile and forgive others.
Idhala irundhu, avanudiyabishayathin tanmee, naa vilangikolala.
From this, we can identify their aspect of anointing.
Nengal sauludiyabishayathu parkumbadu.
When we look into the anointing of Saul.
Onnusamuel 18:10.
Marunvali devanala vidappattu pollada avi, saulin meel erengitthu, avan veetilkulay diirkadarisam sollikondirindhaal.
Nengin indha vasavathal rendu pothra niggal pakala.
We can see two parts in this verse.
Ontride devanala vidappattu pollada avi, saulin meel erengitthu.
One is the evil spirit from God came upon Saul.
Aday same time, innoravi velaseyidu tirkadarisam solikondrunthu.
At the same time, he prophesies.
Apa enna arta?
What does it mean?
Orayal, oraytime la, avi linarumbara, adutthakkan etirkasun jolra, adayenathal tension ayarra.
As same person, as in moment of time, he fell in spirit and he prophesied.
Ingerekkara, tonnoor vairi pridtha arkina.
Here ninety percentage of people are found in that sector.
Anayakurudhey walkayi pridtha ark.
Many of your life are like that.
Abishayakam enbadu onudiyavalkayla oru asayvok, kudippayok, kalthalulayok, yavaneyopoy idikkaradukkaadu kodukappattu sakthi alla.
Anointing is not the power to be shaken or dash upon anything.
Onudiyullaana manushin belappadumudiyaha kodukappattu oru undu sakthi.
It is a power that is given to the Indian man who get his strength and.
Anai ida, avasariyana vedathal saul ubayavapattavillai.
But Saul did not use it in a proper way.
Avanukka nadakkeed enna?
What happened to him?
Abishayathunadu adutthastapay avay manayindha varla.
The next step with the anointing did not enter in his mind.
Abishayathu avapudupikke vaila.
He did not renew his anointing.
Nekbaranga license apudupiklan, apudupiklan enna narakku?
If they are not renewing their license, what will happen?
Huh? Elavutta ongeludiyah visa apudupiklan enna narakku?
If you do not renew your visa, what will happen?
Ongeludiyapassport apudupiklan enna narakku, naa ongeludhi teriy.
And you know if you are not renewing your passport, what will happen?
Adu bole, abishayathul ioru pudi dakkudal irundukitee iruk.
Likewise, there is a renewable anointing.
Analata taavidu sollukkaran, ennen pudu enneenala abishayakam manukkar.
So David say, "Anoint my the new oil."
Appidi tha avan aathay sollukkar.
That's what he used the word.
Thithu muntre ayindle parkumbadu.
When we look into Titus, chapter 3, verse 5.
Parisutha aviin pudi dakkudalinal namirachitthaa.
The Lord saved us by the renewing of spirit.
Apa overunnaaloo parisutha avi la oru pudu anointing iruk.
Every day, there is a new anointing in holy spirit.
Namakirbaya pathi parikara.
We read a study about grace.
Anakirbaya kuda pudiya kirbaya iruk.
And there is a new grace.
Namalangal laa paadivare, ennekova angana oru kirbaya vichitthu sutidhey arga.
And some are wandering with the old grace that are received.
Experi date tanti pichinga.
And they have crossed the expiry date.
Arudana, andha palayakirbaya vichitthu paathupattaradu, kaitattaradu, alliyapodaradu, abiyavodaradu.
With the old grace that they receive, they sing and song and they shout hallelujah.
Endho oru kariume expiry agamboladu, adu konjanal karchadu idha damaro, vashamama mar.
When a particular things got expiry and it become a poison later.
Adu bole abishayakam kuda, nee sariyaa use pannenana, adu onakkav keda mar.
If you do not use the anointing properly, it become a treachery for you.
Nigabaiyil niggal padchupadigana.
When you look into the Bible.
Abishayakam betta oru varshathala, saul andha abishayathu ilandha.
And with an anointing, he received one year, he lost the anointing which he received.
Adukiparagam 31 varshaavara jaavayirunda.
And thereafter, then after thirty nine years, he was a king.
Thirty nine years avan raja vaerindhalo, abishayakam illada oru raja.
And he was the king without anointing for thirty nine years.
Adha avan life lu niggal pakala.
We can see that in his life.
Taavidinai bole varettidhey erpa.
And he was chasing David like a dog.
Samayam gaddakumala eetii irjigidhey erpa.
And he will take the javelin throw upon him.
Yonathana kettavartelak, kili kiliin kili cha.
And he spoke in evil words with Jonathan.
Kadaisila anjanam bakkaravana, kurisolavana, thadi pona.
At last, he was seeking after the magicians and sorcerers.
Abishayathu elakkamboladu, narakkara thinkugal adu da.
And these are the evil things when happen, will lose anointing.
Avanudiyabishayakam talayvan, abhibadiyin abishayakam.
And the anointing over his head was captain.
Anatthaavidinabishayaka appadi padadala.
But the anointing of his David was not like that.
Kattar abishayam unupadhe cholrdar, ivana enakkaha abishayakam.
When the Lord anointed him, told him, "You're anoint for me."
Imda abishayathavichita, avan avanukaaha varthrala, enakkaha varan.
And he could not live for himself and he have to live for me.
Ippanigal paranga, ongelabishayanga ennan paranga.
Now you check what is your anointing.
Ippanigal kandubidchukkunngal.
You have to identify yourself.
Namdya irukka, pocketla irukka, illan kandubidchilla.
Is it found in a packet or not?
Adutthakana parkumbadu.
When we look next.
Salemun irandu visay abishayakam manup.
Solomon was anointed twice.
Onnurajakkal onnamadikaram 33 vasanaate parkumbadu.
When we look into first Kings, chapter 1, verse 33.
Ingge modalmodalaga, avan abishayakam manappadukar, oru soonanid, oru kattralayai naa parkumbadu.
And this is occasion he anointed first time.
Avargal rajaalkuk mundaavaga pravishta podu, raja avanukki, nengal ongel andavunadu sevakarik kuttikondu, enkumarnaakiya salamonai, enkoveer kardhinme leetchi, avanikiigunukka adhitukondupungal.
Opadhi umbadu.
Asarinagi saadukku thailakombay koodaathilirunthi edhuthukondupoy, salamonai abishayakam banninaa.
Salamonai abishayakam banninaa.
He anointed Solomon.
Bodalavasavastavasanam, avanay abishayakam manakutikundu pongalindu cholukkar.
And the first thing is occasion, they asking to bring this Solomon to anoint.
Rendavadu vasanam cholukkaradu, avanay abishayakam banninaa.
And the second verse said that they anointed Solomon.
Andha life epidurundhu jarima?
And see how was the life?
Avam balisalathuna kattar pesuvaa.
And when he offered sacrifice, the Lord will speak to him.
Avan orunal balisalithidu, angayavadukkada.
He offered a sacrifice and slept there.
Avan aranmanilirundhu gibionla pooy balisalathara.
And he went, came from a palace to go to get home to.
Ibra rajaavamariyach.
Now he became a king.
Analu abishay, andha irathala balisalithidhe, kattaridhi vitliyakadakara.
Now he offered a sacrifice and stayed in the house of God.
Abishayakam narambinavalkay, uavitukonukku pooga asavaradu, kattaridhi vitliyirukkunana asavaram.
But you feel in the anointing that you receive and he will never allow you to go to your home, it will make it to stay in the house of God.
Agamiyakkoorangalil thangodhi parkilum, umdya aalayithil prakaratil thangum orunale sirandadu.
And it was better than a day to stay in the house of God than rather to stay in the other house.
Anai enna naradadu?
But what had happened there?
Andha geravu kattar avanudhu pesinada.
That night, the Lord commute with him.
Andha abishayathun nairivelirundu boludhu.
When he was filled with anointing.
Onakkenna venunkelukkar.
And asked what you want.
Avan onne ennesona?
And he replied.
Andhavare, nan chinnapilla enakkay nyanamtha.
And he said, "I was so angry and give me a wisdom."
Indha abishayaka avanay nyanavanai uruvaakina.
And this anointing made him a wise person.
Indha abishayaka avanay thalaisarandavanai machinadu.
And this anointing made him a great person.
Avanukku munnalayapidi, nyanivan kadayadu, pinnalayakka nyanavan kadayadu.
And there is no wise person before and after him.
Appidi padu oru abishayathala avan irundha.
And such anointing was rested.
Ipoludha aalayathet kattaa arambithavuttha.
Now he started to build up a temple.
Aalayam melibikondee varukkara.
Now the temple started raising.
Ipoludhu narandhadu enna?
What had happened then?
Onunnaal akamam.
First chronicles.
21 vadamadikaram.
Twenty ninth chapter.
22 vasanaate parkumbadu.
When we look at the twenty second verse.
Ipoludhu rendavisay abishayathukavanna varukkara.
And he came to the second part of anointing.
Avargal andraydina migindu sandoshathode, kattarkum mundaavaga bojana bana bani, nalidin kumarnaakiya salamonai, irandavisay raja vaki.
Evlavo periyavara, anubavakadikadu.
And see how a great experience he received.
Oru visay abishayakam manappadu, ipoludhu topla vandach.
Now he anointed once and came to the top position.
Avanukka andha abishayathul, yavuname yudduthunikumdiya.
And no one can resist against that anointing.
Andha alavabishayaka avan thalamela vandrich.
And such anointing rested upon his head.
Andha modalkattu abishayathul, avan oru sariyana nereve pettukonda.
And he received the fullness of anointing the first time.
Vedam enna sollukkaradu.
What does the scripture say?
Andha abishayathukum munnalay, yarame nikumdiya.
And no one can stand before him with that anointing.
Andha abishayam kadachaparake.
After he received that anointing.
Avanudiyalife suptamma mari pooy.
His life was completely changed.
Avanukku endhavidamana poratam kadayadu.
And there was no conflict to him.
Onnusamuel, onnurajakkal, indhamadikaram, nan kavasanaate parkumbadu.
When we look into first Kings, chapter 5, verse 4.
Analu ipparudhu endevanage kattar, engkum enakileparadali tandat, virothiyam illai, idayoru millai.
Endhaporatam kadayadu.
And there was no conflict for him.
Andha modalabishayaka avanukku oru sariyana nereve koduthavuttha.
And the first anointing gave him a fullness.
Ipidi mudinju odane, ipa aalayathakattava readyagara.
After that, he started to build up a temple.
Ipavam mindla, rendavadu abishayathukpoonunu rasa.
Now he got a desire to come to the second level or second status of anointing.
Ipoludhu abishayathul rendavadu visaykavadu.
And he came to the second time of anointing.
Orutthu taraja vaychilla, tripyarayadu raja vakavala.
And once he became a king, and how it is possible to make him take second time?
Eleksanle jeycha, adutth prudhamamudhiriyavala.
When he become, when in election, they can become.
Ingene naa rajaavayirukkara.
Already he wasn't king.
Thirumavana rendavisay raja vakka.
Again, they become a king second time.
Idu abishayathunadu second portion.
And this is the second part of portion of the anointing.
Oru silal pillengal laa sunday school padikumbothe abishayam paranga.
Some of our children, they receive anointing during sunday school.
Adavacha, avan walkayla maathamilla, poralavu visuvasiyarukku.
And there is no change in their life and they become an ordinary believer.
Nanmayadu, teamayadu, endhalan thirinje, walkayla poratthangala sandikumbadu, indha abishayathu use pannanu, adha rendavudu abishay.
To discern the good or bad or evil and when go to the second part of their life and they must need of this anointing.
Abishayathu nalla use pannanu.
They have to make use of the anointing properly.
Abishayathu namasariyaa use pannanu, waste.
If you are not using properly, it is waste.
Kathodiya parisutha namathukku mayumundavada.
May God's Holy Name be glorified.
Naanagichonnai.
I told you already.
Namdya sandhya school pilligala, nimmasariyavakilana, yavana pisasay enkayadu, thalli kunduva chatruva.
If you do not rope your children, charge sunday school children properly, the Satan may cast them somewhere.
Abishayathala avanadutthastapukkondubono.
And you have to take them to the next step of the anointing.
Sunday school padichamattu bodadu.
It is not enough that you have learnt sunday school.
Avan setrapay setkamattu bodadu.
It is not enough they get to center price.
Adu teevai.
It is needed.
Anadhey pillay abishayathulakondubono.
At the same time, you have to leave your children in anointing.
Andha pillay adutth erisle mukinara divertpanam.
And you have to divert your children towards the.
Avamela arakravishayathapathadu, seyonin abishayana, seona nokkiraavada divertpanam.
And look into the anointing, what they have and you have to divert them to the anointing of Zion.
Naanagichonnai, inge velu ludo chonnai.
Already I told, that I told in velu.
Ipasamibutla oru periyasini maavande, revichikrama odiitthu.
Recently, there was a cinema, it was going Hitler.
Adaloruttha nadigaravada.
And there was actor.
Oru famous actor.
And he was a famous actor.
Ongelkellarunthi, nengal thirtuthukanaama, andha padalaan paathirpi.
And you all know well and you have seen the cinema.
Paadivare, vittla, iti time pass nee etthavakadukkacha, time pass onakkijabathala arukkunamay, thavare TV munnalarukkupadana.
Your time pass should be in prayer and not in television.
Oru visuvasikindha worldathal entertainment kadayadu.
There is no entertainment for a believer.
Ilakparan kaalam ini, varukkara da irukkara.
And the coming of the Lord is soon.
Nengipasamibutla padigana, prabhasan oru nadigaravada.
And recently, we can see a actor called Prabhas.
Prabhas, avan andhalala, namavisuvasi, sunday school padichapayya.
And he was a believer who learnt sunday school.
Oru time varikam, sunday school padichana, avan uyyakaradi sundakara payya.
And to a particular period, he learnt sunday school and he was related to the servant of God.
Avanukkandha abishayakam irundchan, teriyala?
I do not know whether he had that anointing.
But avan adutthastap deviathul varla.
And he did not come to the next step of divinity.
Avan lead pannala.
He was not leader in that way.
Yar lead pentaipo?
Who led him?
Yar control penta?
Who controlled him?
Ha? Worldathin adibadiyakantrol penta.
The prince of the world controlled him.
Avan tuukkundu, engavutida, India laa secondla kundupuyutida.
And he made him to the top, second top position of India.
Nengiyosuchuparanga.
You'll think and see.
Namdya walkay epidirukku.
What hope is our life?
Ongeludhi life, nengasariyaa abishayathul, maindan banlanan, pisasoni angia kundupuy, padala thulathu thukipotupidu.
If you maintain not your life in a proper way and the Satan may pass you in a bottomless pit.
Idai unarundhadana, salamon, rendavudu abishayathukvara.
And he who examined Solomon came to the second position of the anointing.
Avan kettuka.
And he asked.
Paathiruka.
And he has seen.
Avanappavukka kadachabishayathala, avan pathukkadee avan.
And he had seen the anointing with the father received.
Avaruku bastukkadachadu.
And the first time he received.
Rendavudukkadachadu.
Second time he received.
Munaavudukkadachadu.
He received third time.
Avan jeshitthara.
And he conquered.
Evlavo poratavnalalu winbantara.
And he overcome many kinds of conflict and overcome.
Ivam mindla, adutthabishayathukvara.
So he came to the second step of anointing.
Andha rendavudu abishayathukvandha peragu, avan life maindan banlan.
After he came to the second step of the anointing, he could not maintain his life.
Kattar onakkupanathuk kodupadu.
God will give you money.
Ah, onakkuvasadiyuk kodupadu.
He will give you wealth.
Nee adu sariyaa use pannanu, onenutupidu.
If you do not use it properly, it will depart from you.
Onakkuk kodupadu.
He will receive.
Neesabaiyataanguvan kodupadu.
And he will give you, that he will sustain in the church.
Onmyayirupayindru kodupadu.
Counting you, that you will faithful, he will give you.
Avukodukkarkak readyyarukkara.
He is ready to give you.
Ananiyadhey antpidi use pannanukkardu, onudiyachai.
And it is your choice how you make use of it.
Ananarandha keedu enna?
But what is the treachery happened here?
Rendavudu abishayakam kadachaparake.
After he received the second anointing.
Avan adamaindan palla.
He could not maintain.
Avam mind mulusum pengalpakkam poits.
His mind is full of to turn towards women.
Adha avanudiyavilchikicarnam agam.
And this became the reason for the falling.
Sabikulla vanditthaparake.
After coming to the church.
Anandrumel, pennandrumel, incholitthu, mom sigumaanadakaradukindha vasanaathu use panna kudara.
And you should not use the verse during the Quran, because seeing there is no difference between man and woman.
Ellathuk oru limit iruk.
There is a limit for everything.
Andha limitliyadan, niggal poogadu.
And you have to maintain in that limit.
Avasiyam illamal, vedukalukku poogukkuda.
And without any needer, you should not go to the house.
Avasiyam illamal, vedu sandipukkalukku niggal chellakukada.
And without any needer, you should not go for the visiting of house.
Shumayinka vandham, pesunam, kaapi kudchen, chor saaptam, abrinu poogukkada, apidi adavudhu thavaranapadakalay, niggal vaitturundhal, niggal thundikano illavita, abishayathunadu adutthastapukkun, nee varam maathai.
If you have any wrong thoughts, you have to disconnect it and you cannot come to the second part of the anointing.
Onnam, rajaakkal, namapadikumbodhu.
When we look into Kings.
Salamonudiyavalkayla narandhatthinku all.
And what the evil happened in the life of Solomon was that.
Yippudi rendavisay kattaravanae raja vakam maathinaro, aday bole, rendavisay avanay echaritthaa.
And how he anointed second time, the same way the Lord warned him second time.
Magani, nee porudhu tavaru.
Son, the path you traverse is wrong.
Magali, nee porudhu tavaru.
The path you traverse is wrong.
Onakkur oru sopunagadakku.
And there will be vision for you.
Onnevada periavanga, onakkalosunacholuvanga.
And greater about you will counsel you.
Tirkadarisana varo.
There will be prophecy.
Prasangal chaattamari varo.
And there will be message like a whip.
Uyyakaran, onakkandipada.
And the servant of God will control you.
Correct pannala, nee rendavudukattathul, nee munaavudukattathuk poomdiya.
If you do not write yourself and you cannot cross the second step.
Onnurajakkal, patthinora madikaram, unbadavasanaate parkumbadu.
When we look into first Kings, chapter 9, verse 11.
Rendavisay raja vaka maathappattabidinal, irandavisay avanay echarikida.
And he became twice, he was anointed, twice he was warned.
Agyal isreveli devanage kattar, salamonukku, irandavisay darshanamagi, aniyya devagali pinpatthavendam, endhakattliyittirundu, avan kattari vittuthu, tanirayithithirupi.
Padigala, rendavisay abishayakam manappattadu, naala, avanukka warning ethranthavuk kodukkara.
How many times he was anointed, he was given warning for how many times.
Neepona root sariyilla.
You, the path you traverse is wrong.
Nee abishayakam manappattavan.
And you were the anointed.
Undesayalgal, indha ikkayothuvaradu.
And there is no actions that he was contrary to.
Ow cholukkaradi, ellavatim, anubavikke, enakadigara undu.
And Paul say, "I have willing to accept everything."
Ananau lyanchigarandhu, uliyathukadu, tagdiyayira.
But it is not worthy for the ministry which I do.
Worldathanam, epidiyanubavikala, anandhamarkathukadu, vadavadu.
And we can experience this world in any way but this way it is not reasonable.
Salamon, third, muntraavudukattathuk varavayilla.
And Solomon did not come to the third state.
Adukiparugadu devanay, avanay nisayarumsthaade, orangattaramstha.
And he started to keep God away.
Kathodiya parisutha namathukmayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Indike namdya message, taavidum muntrukattu abishayakam.
Today's message is David and three stages of anointing.
Kathodiya parisutha namathukmayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Ingene naa parkumbadu.
When it comes here.
Onnusamuel, 16:3, the God said of him, "You take the oil of oil and anoint the son of him." Indha abishayakam, ipoludhu, paninandavasanaathal, avan meel erangidharadu.
Now this anointing is resting upon him in 12 verse.
Padu paninandavasanaathal, kattar choladu, ivantha, ivamela abishayakam manukkar.
And he was the one who is anointing.
Pathimuntra vasanaathal, thailakombayaduthu, avan sagodharar naduville, avan abishayakam manappattan.
And they took the horn of oil and anointed in midst of his brethren.
Adu varikoru sadaarnamanshay.
Until now, he was an ordinary person.
Adu adu meech, adu beechikondrana.
And he was the one flocking the sheep.
Anai inneki narandhadu enna?
But what had happened then?
Avanukka oru abishayam kadaitthadu.
And he received anointing.
Avanudiyavallu, ipoludhu, tanla varukkara.
And his life come to the turning point.
Adu varikidu, soramattal, lakshmijanavastikutupan.
Until now, he used to have a half.
Adu meechikutupan.
And he used to flock the sheep.
Idu da avanukkithirinja uleyam.
And this was the ministry that is known to him.
Anai inneki narandhadu enna?
And what happened then?
Inneki thidiirna, avanay vedatthadi vandu, avanay kuuputte, samuel, avanay kattarkai, abishayakam banna.
Then suddenly, they saw doctor him to the home and they anointed for him for God.
Kathodiya parisutha namathukmayumundavada.
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
Naai ipum modalkattu abishayathunadu, saalbadukal, ongelukku chollavirumbukkara.
Now I want to tell the actions of the first stages of anointing.
Nengelarmay, abishayakam manappattavala, irukkala.
And they all may be anointed one.
Ongel life lu, nengadha abishayathuk, parag, ongel life, epidu, niggal kunduboninga, devan, epidu, ongelakondubonara, pisas, ongelukkayla, epidu, kurukavanda, worldah, epidu, vanduchu, abrinu, ongelukkati.
After you receive the anointing, you know how it watch, path you traverse and what the Lord is leading you and how Satan crossed your way.
Modalabishayakam, sagodharar naduville, avanukka kadaitthadu.
The first anointing, he received among the brethren.
Veedla kadachadu.
And he received in the house.
Avan irundhaveedle, avanukka abishayakantthadi vandukadachadu.
In the house, he reside, the anointing came and sought of him.
Ongelkay abishayam kadachayada, yavu varuka.
Can you identify the place where you received anointing?
Abishayam kadachadu, date, yavu varuka.
Do you remember the day that you received anointing?
Orunal, oru vittla, nengay kuukthaga.
One person, they call him at home.
Engelvittla virundu ochikka.
And we had a feast at home.
Chaapadavanga.
You come and have feast.
Nangana ennatukkina.
I asked for what reason?
Yam payya abishayakam bettan naal.
And this is the date where my son got anointing.
Ipidiyum bendikasla oru team irukkana.
And there is a team in Pentecost like this.
Naga parananal kondadhrudhal.
And we will not celebrate birthday.
Yam payyan neesithu, kattar abishayakam mananala, thana ganesiro, fist vekiro.
And we will conduct feast loving our son and the day we had anointed.
Ongelkay engavachabishayam kadachadu, yavu varuka.
Do you remember the place where you got anointing?
Endhamarathadile, endha churchile, endha hallle, enthera maniki, endha irathle, endha soonalile, kattar ongelukka abishayam koduthani, yavu varuka.
Do you remember what occasion and under which tree and with what time, what day you have received the anointing?
Veedla, sagodharar naduville, avanukka abishayam kadachadu.
And he received the anointing amidst of the brethren in the house.
Avanappabi pathukthi tairindha.
And father looked at him.
Avan annanlaa pathukthi tairindha.
And brothers looked at him.
Ellarukkandbuudha, parkumbadu, abishayakathaila.
When they all looked at him, the horn of oil was given upon him.
Kattar ivanay, tanakkandre, abishayakam banna.
The Lord anointed him for himself.
Appidi oru abishayaka, avanukka kadachadu.
And such anointing he received.
Adu varikidu sadaaramayirundha oru al.
Until then, he was an ordinary one.
Abishayaka vandha, unna life.
And when he got this anointing, his life was changed.
Onnusamuel, 16:18. Oray, andha abishayathul, takkun oru change.
And there was a great change with anointing.
Appadunandha veelakarari, lorvan pradithramaga, idu betlagemiyanagi, isaay, kumarana, orvani, kandilkrain, avan vasipathil thairinavan, avan barakramasali, yuttaviiren, kariyasamathan, saundhriyamulavan, kattar avanode, kodai, irukkara, enna.
Abishayakam, epidimati, rizja, unna padigala? And see how the anointing changed him.
Avan kariyasamathan.
And he was a cunning and playing.
Avan vasipathil thairinavan.
And he was cunning and playing.
Avan parakramasali.
And he is a mighty man of valor.
Avan yuttaviiren.
And he is a man of war.
Avan saundhriyamulavan.
And he is a complete person.
Kattar avanode irukkara.
And the Lord was with him.
Abishayaka oruva kulla varumbadu, oru life la, oru transfiguration varnu.
When anointing come upon you, there should be transfiguration in your life.
Oru maru roomavarnu.
There should be transformation in your life.
Idu saulukulla ahamatthala narandhadu.
And this happened in the life of Saul in the beginning.
Onnusamuel, patthamadikaram, niggal parkumbadu.
When we look into first Samuel, chapter 10.
Indha abishayakam kadaitthapodu.
When he received this anointing.
Onnusamuel, 16:6.
Appadukkathroodhi avi, unmeel erangava, nee avanulodi, kodu, diirkadarisam, soli, vera manushana vaan.
Modalabishayakam, saulai, vera manushanai, maathitthu.
The first verse, the anointing of the Saul made him a different, entered a different person.
Onnusamuel, patthamadikaram, unbadavasana.
First Samuel, chapter 10, verse 9.
Avan samueli vittupogumbari thiruminapodu, devan, avanukka vere, irudayithikodutha.
Modalabishayathul, saulukku, vera irudayam kadaitthadu, vera manushanai, avan marinana.
In the first anointing with Saul received, he became another person and another heart was given to him.
Anai enna ongelukku puriyalio, illa teriyalio, ongelukku paadantthiriyadu nal, secondukke pohamavud.
But he could not identify, could not understand, so he could not enter to the second step.
Namchil, namapilligala, padigana, oru silal, primary school leenipadiranga.
When we see some of the children, they were stopped, seized in a primary school.
Abidinavavu. Abidinavatna, primary school naa etna adu?
Till what standard?
Adutth midle.
Then middle school.
Adu 8.
Till 8 standard?
Arudana, adutth? Cholunga. Ha? High school.
High school.
Adu 10th.
Till 10th.
Higher secondary, plus one, plus two.
And higher secondary.
Alipadthan college, nee enganipadirukkant, teriyenake.
And higher secondary, plus one, plus two, then after college.
Enganipadirukkunngal.
Did you stop your anointing in a primary state? And one who stopped the anointing in primary level, he is called Saul. And he was stopped there and he wanted reach till the suicide point. How was our life today? You have to analyze yourself in what stage you are. This first anointing made David a mighty man of valor, a comely person and cunning in playing. When we look unto first Samuel chapter seventeen verse thirty four. He said so, after I received anointing, how he was. After you receive anointing, you overcome, prevail over the line. And you overcome this. After you receive anointing, you have the power to resist against the devil. And you have to resist the evil powers. The first state of the anointing is resist against Satan. You had to tear the line. And tear the bear. And you will become a divine one. What is the meaning cunning in playing? Not playing only guitar. And afterwards you will have attention towards the Bible more. And you have to meditate and analyze the word of God, there is eternal life. May the God's holy name be glorified. When he was stood and anointing, there was many comfort found. And he was a new one anointing. And he received the new anointing, he could not maintain his life properly. In the beginning we received anointing, we did not know what to do. Annoyingly we have lost grace many ways times. And I also counted loss many times. And they used to say about the teachers that ones who were not born in spirit and water, he could not reach the kingdom of heaven and they did not tell about their anointing. And this anointing is there. And with this anointing he slain Goliah. And this anointing is making a ruler. And with this first anointing, he slain Goliah in a single beat. And before that he could not beat anyone properly. How many stones he took? And he took five stones. And this anointing made him to beat in a single beat. If your anointing is proper, within a single beat, you will prevail over the Satan. And see the how and how has changed his life. And he, one who was flocking the sheep. And one who was staring the line. And one who prevailed over the bear. And his duty was over. Now he came to the battlefield. Now he came to the battlefield and overtook Goliah. Now he overtook Goliah. Now where he gone? And there is no work to flock the sheep and he came to the palace. And this was a tragedy happened to him here. And what was the posting he received when he slain Goliah? After you receive children, you will get the job, you will get marriage and you will get children, everything and wealth, everything. And after, after that you will go to the next place. And after you receive anointing, everything will be given to you. And one who was called for the marriage, please, I said so. And when he was called for the marriage and after he will go for the feast. Your mind was gone to a different level. And he said so, and I've got new building, house, I will not come. And I said I got a new home, I will go after that. After you receive anointing, the Lord will give you the fullness of blessings and wealth and everything to your deliverance, but you should not keep your eye after it. After he received the anointing and he was not looking towards the bear or lion, and when he slain the Goliah and his attention turned towards the palace. After he received the anointing and he was went after the palace and gives attention paid towards the Maika. And Maika loved Saul. And Satan will look unto you what you love most. And we can see in the Bible, Maika and David loved each other and Saul looked unto him and he wanted defeat David in this way. And according to that he married and settled in his life. How many days? How many days he stayed there? When Saul heard that he was in the house and he wanted to kill him on that day itself. And from that day he completely forgot Maika. And what you love most and with that the love Satan become and attack you. After you receive anointing, if you are paying attention or contrary toward the word of God and love of God and to the word of God and it becomes a snide for you. So and after he getting some wealth and possessions and his strange mind was changed a little bit. And one who received a car newly and he used, attention is paid only towards the car and not towards the word of God and Bible reading. How you have to read? He came to the battlefield. And he taken all this milk, house and apples and came to the battlefield. He could not find his brother. When there was an announcement, declaration said about who overcome Goliah and the daughter of king will be given a son-in-law to him and with looking into this, he was forget the brother. And he called the brother. And when the one person was replied unto him and one was slaying or defeating Goliah and will be given as a palace for him and possessions will be given to him. And while he is speaking, who came there? And brother came there. Why did you come here? Why, who asked to come here? Did you flee away all the flame? And he scolded at him. And he was scolded and he was just making a round there. If I kill him, what will he get? His mind gone there. Where your mind was diverted, his mind was diverted to the marriage and the possessions and so the world and somehow the Satan is diverting your mind. But what had happened then? And through anointing he received somewhat victory, but because of the wife, he was roaming around the wilderness. What happened next? And who was with him? And we can see the team which is found in first Samuel chapter twenty-two verse two. And he should be found in the palace, but he was found with the person though a distrust and discontented and one who were murmuring. When we look. Twenty-one thirteen of first Samuel. And we can see that David was found and changed his behavior before them feigned himself in mad and spittle fall upon. If you make use of anointing not in a proper way, it makes you mad. If you stay not in a proper place and you will become a friendly with a distrust person and a distrust contented and one who is dead. Now the anointing was there. Now he lying. When we look unto first Samuel chapter twenty-one verse two. And the priest asked unto him, why did you come alone? And he said so, a business of king I come here. How presumptuously you are telling lie to your servant of God? You have anointing. And you were the son-in-law of a king and why did you come alone? He said, because of king's business I have come alone. The business of kindness so haste I have come alone, many of believers are lying this way. What happened then? And if you are not meeting the anointing properly and you will not get the full and shelter. When we look unto first Samuel chapter three verse eight. And he could not get even a single time of meal and he looking at the priest for a bread. And he had to take this sword in his hand. Now he said, there is no weapon in my hand. And if you are not using the anointing properly, you will become the person without any weapon. If you are a man of war, you must have this sword always in your hand. If you do not have a sword in your hands and the devil will overcome you. Now you were begging to the man's hand. I need money. I need this. I need that. Why? You are the anointed one. You ask unto God. Why you want to ask unto man? You had anointing. Even so you would look like David, you did not maintain the anointing properly. Now you desire to eat, you could not eat. When we look unto first Samuel chapter twenty-five verse eight. And you are saluting with the man and was asking it to him to give something to him. And he that will be faithful upon God will prosper. And you are not have anything. You are the anointed one. You are the blessed one. You are rich in anointing, why you want to beg to others? And why you came to the state that you want to beg to others? When the servants of God visit your home and you should have, you should not come and ask to beg to others' house and give them. And you should not argue the debt from other friends and should give. If you have coffee, you can give. If you are nothing, you give water. And if you have got better time, you can give something to them. And without money, you should not receive debts and give to them. You say so that if you give only offering will be blessed and you do not have anything, why you should have to give? And you should not ask God, answer to the other one. It may be a Muslim house and what they think about it. It may be a Hindu house and what they think about it. And they may believe what they think about you. Why I said this? Once I went to the company for a prayer. And there is a four companies in a single branch. And one division in one part. One is computer division. And another is printing division. And the new building division. In a single building, there is different parts. And they mind their own business and they go. I went to pray in a single building. I prayed. And one believer, he was found individual, there he called for a prayer. I went there. When you look unto that time. The next, the building was about Hindu. And when he was having rent and a pen in the printing area, he made all the banana sleeves and plain there. I prayed for that division. And the believer who was carrying the Bible, one who celebrated the Bhadavaja, he asked money to him. What he think about us? They think about us that and with the pastor come, they have to give money urgently, so he gave the money to him. I am not mocking, you have to meditate. If you want to give money, you must ask, you must have money at all the time. Pastor Joel used to tell. In the ark of the Nova, all the creatures of the world were in pair. Now they opened the door. And everyone went outside. But even. And he had an offering to give, a sacrifice to God. And he offered a sacrifice and Lord smiled, it is a sweet selling sable. And two of them were speaking after the ash. One was Saul and the servant. And they sought after for a long distance. At last the servant was a man of God said so, if they tell about the ash, they said the story. And the Saul had said that if you are looking after the man of God. And the servant of Saul said so, I have, I will give. And even if you do not have. The Lord look unto your emptiness. The Lord visit you and he will come and give you an abundance. You must stay on, Nisa, I don't have power to give to the place I have given, your Lord will come and bless you. And the Lord will bless you that you. I visited the place one day. And there was no man to make me to sit there. And there was no man to. And there was no man to kneel down and pray. It was such a house. There was no fan. And it was an upper chamber with a seat. I prayed there and came. I transferred to some other place. Then I become preacher and went to the convention. And I looked there. They introduced one person. I inquired about it. And he has spent eighteen lakhs of money for the convention. And he said so, you don't want to spend any kind of spending. And he was an important person in the church. And Pastor Wesley dedicated his house. When I inquired at him and he was the one who would not have mats to spread on. You think and see. And the Lord who gives will give in abundance. You have to.
And some could not contain the words and they make a tension. And that was Abishai. One person mocked at David and he said, "So why you remain silent?" And David was making a profession that these three sons are overcoming me. Or you like that? Even if you feel an anointing, are you having the spirit of taking vengeance? And even someone is speaking against you, take fasting for three days, are you praying and pray? Are you having the adamant nature? You may come to the second step of anointing. In some certain things, you might have received the overcoming nature. But the Bible say you must receive the inter-overcoming. When you look this. And this is the second level of anointing. When we look under the same, second chapter five. Third verse. This is the third level of anointing upon Israel. What does it mean? And he became the king over all over Israel. He was anointed over all Israel and he became the king of all, able to control over all tribes. And this is the third level of anointing. Step by step, he is coming up. And there was trembling. And he is getting beaten. Even so, he was coming to the next step of anointing. And this is the third level of anointing. In the third level of anointing, he sustained and stood there till the end of his life. How many years? The entire perfection of life for thirty-three and a half years. And thirty-three years and he was a king over all Israel and Jerusalem. And this is the perfection in his life. How many are able to change like that? May the God's holy name be glorified. After he received the third level of anointing, there was a total change in his life. In one part, he received failure. And the Lord is giving him judgment. But he still is not leaving him. When you get beating, I used to say, "My grace of God is forever for me." And the Lord beat him nightly. Three days, seven days, he will not eat and he remained silent. And he said, "So," son was dead. And he said, "In the mercy of the Lord, you have been dead forever." Falling upon the feet of him and he was greeted with the third level of anointing. In what state of anointing you have? When you come to the third level of anointing, what will happen? He come to the third level of anointing in 2 Samuel, chapter four, fifth verse. What happened there? Find seven of 2 Samuel. David took the stronghold of Zion. When did he took? First level of anointing, he do not know what is Zion. In second level of anointing, who do not know where is Zion? When he took the third level of anointing, he went to this stronghold of Zion. And no believer, no servant of God can receive the Zion and New Jerusalem simultaneously and without receiving the third kind of state of anointing. And no don't properly and no servant of God reach Zion and no believer can reach Jerusalem even if they receive the third level of anointing. Anointing will take you to Zion. Anointing will take you to New Jerusalem. Anointing will not leave at the halfway. You must come to the next step. That's what we conduct tarrying meeting every week. So we are giving the worship session in the tarrying meeting and a Bible study. This anointing was staying in you forever. Seven and a half years in one tribe and all over Israel for thirty-three years, he was a king. Overall, Israel, I will speak about the subject in your Wednesday. If you have interest, you come. Most of the believers are not coming for the Bible study. And in some way, you have come here today. They remember that it was Sunday today. One, he took the stronghold of Zion. Second. The first part of the third level of anointing, you must become the person of the kingdom of heaven. Second, 2 Samuel, chapter five, verse seventeen. And when they received the first level of anointing, no one came after him, but when he received the anointing over all Israel and he came to the south of him. When he received the third level of anointing, Satan will come against you. When Jesus was born, he came to make him to them. And you were baptized, you came to tempt him. And he said, "So the prince of the world come unto me," that things of the thing was not unto me. In every state, Satan will come to you. Not only the thing that you receive on our baptism, he will come unto you when he received the third state of anointing, he came unto him. What he did so? And beautifully, he went to the place who was safe and he went there. The third level of anointing will preserve you in his tents. And the Lord will keep you in his tents in the days of evil. And he went to the safest place. And the name of the Lord is a strong tower and he is a refuge for me. And you have to refuge yourself. And it is not needed for you to fight. You have to cover yourself. And he, the dwelling of the high, the most high, he will stay in the almighty. The third level of anointing will take you to Zion and New Jerusalem and it will make you a person and a strong tower, a righteous run to it. The third part of the third state of anointing. When we look into 2 Samuel, chapter five. And these enemies started resisting against David. What happened there? And he discovered the Satan and the enemies that brought him were looking around it. When we look into 2 Samuel, chapter five, verse twenty. In that place, it is called the Baal Perazim. And if we can see. And it is mentioned here as a name called the Baal Perazim and they make it broken upon the enemies before me as a breach of waters. And what are the things you feared about and all the powers will be scattered. To watch with powers, you were scattered and you were trembled around, the Lord was scattered under all those powers. The other super point was. When the third anointing comes. The ark will come unto you. When we look into 2 Samuel, chapter six. And David brought the ark of God to his house. Twelfth verse. When you bring the ark to the house and the Lord will give you all the talents and gifts and give you, and give back the ark unto you. And such a glorious experience will come unto you. The Lord will make your life a shining bright day. And don't think about the thing which you have lost and he will give you in double foods. Once again, you will resist against the table. Once again, we stand in the gap. Once again, you will raise a zeal for God. All your calling and your gifts are done changing. You are believing the ark is coming unto you again. And you have to step into the third level of anointing. After that, the next level is he wants to build the temple of God. What had a desire for him? He want to build a temple. I want to see God. Until I receive the habitation or dwelling for Jacob, I do not want to sleep slumber to my eyelids. We will look into 2 Samuel, chapter seven, verse two. Somehow I have to build the temple. I am in the wife's house. And it is found the sedatory. I've built a temple for a house of God. I want to see the dwelling of God. In 2 Sam 32, we can see, and I will not come into the tap in a clock in my house, I will not sleep to my eyes and I slumber to my eyelids. What was your desire now? You are the temple of God. The temple of God is holy. When you come to the third level of anointing, you will think more about your life. Until now, you have problem of your money. And if you receive the third level of anointing, you will have the problems of your family, your children and what you provide and possessions and job. And you receive the anointing and you will think about more, have to see about God and seek after the things of the Lord. His intentions and thoughts are about the temple of God. His intention about the temple of God. When he tell about temple. And he said, "So," now Moses had a pattern of building a temple and he have given the pattern in my hands. And such a pattern was given, delivered in my hands. And simply or ordinarily, I did not come to this temple. First Chronicle, chapter twenty-eight, verse ninety. Until you make this temple of God as a holy and the God's written Bible was vested in your hands. And David said, "So," the Lord made me understanding by writing, given upon my hands. Your life and my life to be built up and the God's Bible was given and delivered in our hands. When this anointing of Zion comes, the third level of anointing comes, you become a Zion and you Jerusalem. Any powers may come against you, but you will go to the refused place and you will protect yourself. Any kind of battle will come against you, you will conquer. Fourthly, the ark will return unto you. All your intention, thoughts and desires and all your slumber and sleep will be, somehow you want to build the temple of God. And such intention, thoughts will come to you. In one state, you may have other worldly things, but now when you close your eyes, I have reached unto heaven that your thoughts. And that is the third level of anointing. It is all close your eyes. A force will bend your knees. And what kind of anointing you have and what is the state of your anointing? And Lord want to deal with you. Now, the word of God was hearkened in your both ears. I give you some of time. You will just check yourself, what condition of anointing you have. Are you Saul? Are you Solomon? Are you David? First anointing. Second level of anointing. A third level of anointing. I gave you many evidence to the word of God, you to identify yourself in what state of anointing you rest. Perhaps. You may be without anointing, ask unto God, "Give me anointing." For many years, you may be without anointing and you stay in the first level of anointing, ask for the second level of anointing, I want to begin my victorious life. I want to do a overcoming life beginning in me. Or I am tiring for the Lord to give me the third level of anointing. It is enough for me to strive for it and I want to become a overcomer. I want to become a overcomer in all kinds of places. I want to overcome those love against me. When we get this mind. Your Zion, your Jerusalem will come before you. Any power may come against you, but you will rescue yourself. And any kind of battle will come, you will conquer. And the Lord, all that you have lost, will come seek after you. Grace, gifts and talents will seek after you. All your thoughts become built in the temple of God. All your thoughts and mind become the for holiness. And you will consecrate yourself for holiness. And you will cry for holiness. You will empty yourself for holiness. You will consecrate your sleep and slumber for holiness. And your bed will be consecrated for holiness. I want to see the dwelling of Lord of Jacob. Your child of God. What anointing you have and rest upon you? Those who want to raise up your hands. I stay in second level of anointing, I was having just overcoming life, I was in prayer, I was in nature, those who say it, raise up your hands. Dear the believer, don't stay in this. It's enough. And it was in the day, but stayed the seven and a half years. And God want to become a king over all over Israel. The reason for you to call him here is that you must become a overcomer. And the plan of God concerning you in his mind is you become an entire overcomer. And how many have this hope? How many of you have this belief? A question. And those who say that I am on the third level of anointing for the closure of this meeting, let us come to that stage. And lift up your right hand. Lord, if it is true that you have given the third state of anointing to David, you give to me also. If you read about Jesus, you will be shocked and amazed. And there is anointing in his birth. In his growth, there is anointing. In baptism, there is anointing. Anointing in his ministry. After he was dead, there was anointing. There is anointing of Zion. How many decide for the third level of anointing? Those persons lift up your right hand. If you asked only for this five experience, the third level of anointing will come and rest upon you. The sign and symbol of the anointing rest upon you is you will become a Zion and a Jerusalem. And you will become a new Jerusalem, which was adored and is a bride. You will be escaped from the old strain of the enemy. All the battle you will face anymore will become a conqueror for you. What you lost will come back unto you. All your mind will be holiness. The purpose of the message, I have urging to speak about this verse today. And if I had such a conflict and how a conflict the Lord may have. And the Lord have come in amidst to take other people to the third state of anointing. I had a desire. I want to see the person those who are going to receive the third level of anointing. This anointing, this in the midst, if you are receiving, you are blessed. Amen. And this meeting will extend, will follow in, so ten minutes. Without receiving the fifth state of, the third state of anointing, no servant of God will have. A believer should not depart from this place and without receiving the third level of anointing. Strive with him. Do not leave him. You hold him. You just pour upon the head of my oil that you have oil come amongst us. Lord Jesus poured upon my head. If it is true that Lord have given the three, the third level of anointing is a message for you. If it is true that it is needed for you, the Lord has sent that word to you. I believe. The Lord should stand in our midst with a while of oil in his hands. Don't allow him to cross over you. Let him pour upon your head. Let him pour upon the anointing oil upon your head. Amen. You may be an old believer. You may be a Sunday school teacher. You may be the servant of God, want to do something for God. You may be a sick. You may be the weak. You may be with many kind of sickness. You may be any kind of person. Without this anointing, you cannot become all overcomer. Once you surrendered unto him. At least you surrendered the word at a word you have heard unto him. You can pray in this way. If it is true that there is a third level of anointing, let it come upon me. A Muslim went to a meeting. In this meeting, Jesus came as a light was preached. He asked. Is there any power which is more significant than Allah, let it come upon me. And straightly, a light come upon him and thrown him away. And he stumbled and stood up. And before he asked, such pass he came upon me. I am standing steadily. If it is true, the goddess Jesus, let the light come upon me. Before the word was ended and the light touched him. He fell down. And it was shameful for him. Too light, it is more than Allah and a true Jesus and it came upon our hands. I ask a question now. I am a great drunkard. If the power of Jesus is the true light and it come and touched me, I give a deliverance. Then next second, the change of power of the true Jesus came upon him. And the drunken spirit left him. Now, he was doing the service for God. Are you believing? If it is true that third level of anointing is true. Bend your knees. And without this anointing, there is no use of living. And there is no use of anointing without this anointing. And without anointing, there is no use of coming to this church. Lord pour upon me. Lord sanctify my hearts. Lord change me through anointing. All young boys and girls bend your knees and stand. All stand on knees. Wherever you are stand on knees. All Sunday school teachers stand on knees. And Lord is going to seal you today. And you will see the wonders which begin in your life. The miracles will begin through you. Now the anointing is coming descend upon us. With that anointing depart from this place and you will become a victorious person. Do not be insane. Do not control yourself. Do not feel shame. Spirit of God let lift a banner upon you. Amen. Taking the anointing oil Sam will tear it in that house. First person king. And he was started to pour his upon head. And Lord said to stop. I am not the Lord looking at the face. I am looking unto the heart. He is not the person. And second person also not anointing. And one by one they were going. And still there is no child. There is one person. Until he comes I never pour anointing upon. My child the Lord have come the anointing for your sake. The anointing is waiting only for you. Lord pour upon me. If you are David the anointing is for you. Katheri vaartegalika istodramanuva. Katheri aviyanavaramel valamaya yaranginaduka istodramanuva. Katheri soligutthasatiyengalika istodramanuva. Orin nerevan abishagathipetupurnamana or devi kavalka vandhi. Yappolidya kaalam thoni talavare sandike ellar karul cheyumudiyai istodramanuva. Pidaakumarunbarzutaviyanavarkai istodramanuva. Ella magimia avikayisalitistodramanuva.
Prasutumla nallanndavari. And aasruthikabittadaanamda maymin samuthukkainindiyoodumistothirikirangathaave. Adyarake kathave karanthavaramlaanirangale kanmanivol padugathu. Navarthinvalal kaalavalilaaviyamudumuda samuthalaraadike. Mudda prasutthasamuthukkundundubhineenalaanindiyoodumistothirikirong. Katherla mayilakathala kaliguraaviyinal nerappadhammada vaartelakke. Katherangal puthesidhe anindiyoodumistothirikiro. Mudda samuthalavaramdhalanirangalaasruthikaravarai vutpikaravaraga. Engadha athmaavake teetchikaravaraga. Mudda vaartinvalangal teetchikaravara vutpikaradevima sakyavasanathakundangala vutpikaradevinaarkkadeeraka anindiyoodumistothirikiro. Avianavare engadharanndavur podali neenadatiasruthaaviklakattandeerakaka angastothraandavari. Katherdi avianavare indakkalavalileenguda nirangaloodu peshinadaan dajiva vaartelka anindiyoodumistothirikirangathaave. Andavari naangalumudaraajaakalaamarmudiaga englangudanandavari. Engadha avishagathumudanangalumudakathukalandaanalkilanglikunniudeshimidiaga vendiklarakathaave. Andavari angastothrasavali andavari kathavi avunavurumure rajaavaka avishagamaninirandavari. Samukathavi andavari salamune rendudharaniravana avishagamaninirandavari. Avanandavishagathain raja mainmiam kathukalavleekathavi. Thavide moontuvaleeniravishagamaninirandavari. Kathavi avunisagodaranaduvaleeniravishagamaninirandavari. Avanuththavirenairindanandavari. Avan kariyasamathanai putthisaliyairindavala naangalumudakathaavi. Uththavirarai kariyasamatrara putthimangala naangalumudanandavulaenglikunniudeshimidiaga vendiklarakathaave. Niritthavide avishagamaninidavala englangudavishagithirikiriraandavari. Davaishagathenaangal kathukaludeshim. Andasankathaavi thavide andavari sellagalangalandavari davaishagathukke andavari edangudamal palanalkalagath maligalilum andavari meedugalilinkathaave andavari andavari vananatharitthalamnandritthirindanandavari. Neeramunngarithathevina avishayumaninadhanath evan thirbomakathaavi. Thirbomamaamderenduvasenir kathavirinduvaavishagamaninirandavari. Andavari avanvarunkathaavi andavari avanukurodamake israel kudumathukuradam yodha janathukuradamake andavari yuttambalaththaandavari. Thavide varavara balathanandanaangalkeetamandavari. Naangalumudavara varavara balatharapalatharavala avishayathakathukalavala avishayathaputhipikaravala. Valamai puthipikaramanushadaanangal kanaapadengalakudeshimathava. Avan mundaamariyakathaavi avishagamanappattanaandavari. Avan mundaamariyakavishagamanappattubaldhakathaavi sagale israel jannakamdrajaavaka avishagamanappattanaandavari. Avanavishayathakaputhipithukundu andavari avan kathavishagathanalirindavanai amder raja baranpaninanaandavari. Aduvale naangalumudakathaavi davaishagathakathukalanglikudeshimathava. Avanavishagathanalavun seyonkattai piditaanandavari. Seyonkattai kattapidittakathaavi amdrajaavaka andavari thirbomathanandavishagathen seyoninavishagathen erisalemavishagathapathugathukundavala. Naangalumudasiyonkottai pidikkeudeshienglikuradamayidumara skurudaran sapparumana daviyala jayke. Engakudavallamai avishagandantakathaavi. Naangalumudasiyonai erisalemamharappada dasiyonavishagathanal nerappadala kanaapadavudeshiingathava. Amner rajaavaka avishagamaninarlandu bellister kellupatturalavunukurodamai vandarlanandavari. Analamavan aranipanidathalavaniirindanandavari. Aduvale naangalumudaraniipanidathalakankaapadengalakudeshimidiaga vendiklaro. Andavari nitthinganallalengradhamdakudanathan maravale marathukankaaradevun. Engalimpaadukakvalamala devanarkkareeraka anindiyoodumistothirikirangathaave. Avianavare angastothirangathaavi. Avan kathavi andavari avunukurodamaisattharpavandavada sattharkalathanneer udainthu odugaravala avan jay kathavani yuttamani bellister jaythan. Aduvale naangalumudenglikuragara satthuri andavari avishagathanalirapi jaykeenglikumudakirbatarmidiaga vendiklarakathaavi. Andavari avan sattharkalay jaythu andavari thevindasamuthalidupoldhakathaavi. Avanikatha udanpidikapadithirbomai andavari thanadavitu kundundaduvala kathaavi. Naangalumudaduudanbadikkenangal puthipithukundu naangaludanbadikappatielaayikaran naangalumudanandaparsutthathapathugathukalanglikudeshimidiaga vendiklarakathaavi. Avan kathaavi andavari devande aaleethakattumidiyavanavanchiavunukulavandhadekathaavi. Andavari naangalumudavurvarum naangal devande aaleymayikkaranandavari. Ningla devande aaleymadusolipattukke kathaavi. Naangalaaleymayamarmidiaga engalaalethirikirirandavari. Engadha aaleetha parshutthaleyma naangal padugathukundu. Andavari neereppovindhalmasandikeengala padugathukalumudiyagadhaavishagathaputhipithukundu. Engadha avishagathabelapadukundukathaavi. Englikuradamayvaragara satthuri naangal jaythu jayaliyagala thavidepolakathaavi. Andavari jayaliyagalamariyappriyadukathaavin rajaadi rajaamasandike. Davaishagathay engadhaprathsreengathirmanakal illavachipathugathukundukathaavi. Mysandikeengalaaythamakumidiaga vendiklaro. Kettadanadavathindichivithparshutthavakappattu. Engadharajaadi rajaamasandike thayidipadukumidiaga vendiklaro. Engadharaja mainmay rajaavishaythapathugathukundu. Eppriyadavariyakaengalaaythapaduthum devasamuthalandhelamaklayasruthanpum. Thudiganaamaymeduthakolom eswenaamathal vendiklaro.
Amen.